Eh, of course, our requirements in terms of eh the application that at a particular stage, we need to go for, for, for notice to the public, informing them of our intention to, um, to, 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 to apply the, the, the licenses. And, and of course, you should, you see the two documents, the one that was done by Collesia Municipality and the one that, that was done by, by, by NESA, of course, with regard to, to the date in which we are sitting today. Now, the journey in the next slide, if you can just move to the next slide. We, we have got two processes that are already completed. In, 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 in July to August twenty twenty four, we have, eh, these development areas and did the designs, that is completed. And in August eh to September twenty twenty four, the calculations of bulk infrastructure requirement, the application for bulk infra-infra-structure from Eskom and also the, the M R A funding application was finalized. So those two processes are completed. Now, there is a process that is in progress since October twenty twenty four. This is the one that we are in now, wherein we, we busy with the NESA distribution license application. And still to come is the issue of us starting with the construction and also beginning with the maintenance and completing the network and at the same time collecting revenue. And these are the two processes that are not start eh and of course they will only kick off after the license has been awarded. Well, eh, in the next slide, if you can move eh, eh, put up a proposed issue, we make sure that eh we, 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 we carry out our, 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 our hopes of a license utilizing it. And if you look at that structure, of course, it, it just eh, 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 start with every, everyone wherein we have got our council at the top. We've got our executive committee and the mayor, we've got the municipal manager with his eh, eh, eh administration. And if you check, while we're doing all the things, there will be disaster management, there will be risk and security management. And on the left will also be monitoring and evaluating through our performance management system and also making sure that there is eh internal auditing job that is being done. So these eh, eh four separate processes will be happening along our structure. So currently, as I speak, this municipality is having five departments. The first department is budget and treasury. The second one is corporate services. We've got committee services and we have technical service department and also the planning department. And specifically for the purpose of this application, technical services is the one that is going to be highly affected by the eh changes of, 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 of this structure. If you check there at the, at the bottom of the next slide, we, we are talking about eh creating a new department that will have to, to, can, can you move to the next slide for the, for the sake of the, of the other viewers? I want you to go to the slide wherein we, we're talking about the proposed structure. I, I will wait for you to go there, just after the journey made. Okay, so we, 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 this is the, we are proposing in, in, in the brown eh, eh, eh box there, an electrical eh department. So we are going to take out electricity from the general technical services and create a new electrical services eh department. And now, this electrical services department, this is how it is going to look like. We are going to have at the top the electrical eh services director or a senior manager in our language. And, and I would request you to move to the next slide, please, wherein we have got eh electric, electric, yes, thank you so much. So we are going to have a senior manager or an electrical director at the top of that electrical services department. And we are also going to have manager projects, manager operations and manager customer relations. Can we move to the next slide? And in the next slide, we are going to have eh, this is, this is the ah, 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 this is the manager operations one. And under the manager operations, we are going to have operations superintendent and under that superintendent, you are going to have electrician, electrical assistant, linesman, vegetation team leader and also general eh workers. Let's move to the next slide. And in the next slide, we are talking about the steps that as a municipality we, 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 we going to, to embark on. Let's start at the bottom with eh number one, where we talk about licenses approval. So it is eh within our expectation that eh this NESA, this license will be approved for Collesia Municipality, wherein immediately after this license is, 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 is approved, we will have to go to number two, wherein we appoint a service provider to assist the municipality with maintenance and operating of network for a period of thirty six months. And now, step number three will follow, wherein the municipality recruits and trains resources for network operating and maintenance as well as responsible person with G C C. And then after step number three, we move to step number four, wherein the municipality will appoint a service provider to work with appointed resources that is specifically for skills transfer. And then now, the step number five, that is where the municipality believes that at this time, skills will have been transferred and will expect whichever service provider that will be there to hand over eh the job or the whole plant to the municipality to continue with the operation. And, and as I conclude eh, Chairperson, I want to emphasize that while it is, it is the responsibility of the municipality to, to provide basic services, which, which amongst the services, electricity is included, I want to highlight the, 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 the key benefits that the municipality is going to get if this license can be conferred. The, 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 the confering of this license, Chairperson, will improve service delivery to the community of Collesia Municipality. Why? Because we will be able to reduce the level of dependence to the central government or to the national government, wherein we'll be able to generate our own money and use our own money as a municipality to, to take services to the people. We will use our own money to, to improve infrastructure in our community. We, we have got a serious backlog of roads, we have got a serious backlog of different services in, in the community. And, and, and this opportunity of, of a license will assist us in terms of collecting more revenue and take that money and utilize it to improve service delivery to our, to our people on our own without hundred percent looking at national government. The other key point that is very, very critical is that the confering of this license to the municipality will immediately grow our structure, it will grow our budget, it will grow our revenue base. And once our revenue base grow, once our, our structure grows, then that means even the grade of the municipality will improve. And once the grade of the municipality improves, that on its own, it also affects the formula for the allocation of funds eh from, 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 from your, your DORA. So, so, so we expect this license to happen as of eh yesterday because we know it will give us the, the, the benefits than the negatives. We are aware, Chairperson, as I conclude, that eh somebody sitting somewhere is already thinking of municipalities that are failing to operate these licenses. We are well aware of the, of those eh disadvantages, we are all well aware of those problems. But from us as a, as Collesia Municipality, our point of interest is that we were only established in twenty sixteen, we did not have the opportunity to exist before. Now that we exist and we started to exist in twenty sixteen, we expect that eh, 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 we be given an opportunity to, to, to showcase that a new establishment with a fresh mind, with a fresh plans is going to be able to operate these licenses. And I want to, to put you into confidence, Chairperson, that don't doubt us. The fact that we are new, it means we are new with fresh plans. We are new with fresh minds, we have learnt a lot from different municipalities that have failed and we are going to use that to our advantage. And with eh those few words, Chairperson, I, 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 I get to close my presentation and say thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much eh Mr. Shilenge. Um, just to explain the process, since you are new, just to explain the process, um, now it's going to be the opportunity for the members of the regulator to ask questions eh from the municipality based on your application and also based on your presentation that you have made today eh as the documents that are before us and eh, and the facts that you presented before us. So what I will, I'm going to request is for you to have um a pen and something to write on. Then you are going to take down all the questions. Once the members have finished um eh asking their questions, then you can come back and answer the questions. So I am going now to um ask the members eh to ask questions. You understand that, Mr. Shilenge? Mr. Shilenge, are you still with us? You are muted? Can you assist eh Mr. Matef? I just want to make sure that they are still with us. Mr. Shilenge, are you still with us?
Checking them, check.
All right. Members just eh, eh, bear with us, um, we just want to make sure that they are still on the platform.
Eh, Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Shilenge?
Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Shilenge, we can hear you? Mr. Shilenge, can you hear us?
I, Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Shilenge, can you hear us? You are safe, Mr. Shilenge? Mr. Mabunda?
Chair, let me talk to them offsite and then I'll come back to you. I, I just spoke to them, they seem to be network, network connection from the other end.
They're disconnected now, yes.
Eh, Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Shilenge, can you hear me?
Yeah, we are back now, we hear you very well now.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Shilenge, do you have a pen with you and um eh maybe a note? Okay then, thank you very much. I'm going to allow the members eh, you, you, I'm going to allow the members to ask questions. Please take down each question. You will only respond after all members have asked their questions.
Thank you.
All right, you may mute yourself now, thank you. All right, members, any questions of clarity? Eh, let me start with Mr. Bokula.
Thank you, Chairperson. Eh, Mr. Shilenge, may, may you, at, at, at some point, I don't think you would be able to share that with us now, eh share your, your business plan and how you are going to implement the eh, the, 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 the trading and the distribution in as far as the people you are going to employ, how you are going to do your maintenance and, 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 and when are you going to be in a position to do all of this? Then the second question I would like to just find out is, when you do your initial or preliminary studies, how did you arrive or what, what, what tariffs did you think you would be able to sell your electricity at? I mean, considering that you still be buying your bulk at Eskom, do you have a feel of, of, of how, how different they would be from, from the Eskom eh tariffs? And the last question, eh when you, when you look at the systems and the fact that Eskom is already there and, 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 and eh working in, in some of the areas, is, is it possible or is it not something that you would look at eh to using already what's existing that Eskom has rather than creating your own new eh, eh, infrastructure, eh billing and, and all of that? Is, is it something that you would consider going forward? Thank you, Chairperson, those are my three questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bokula. Mr. Kise?
Eh, thanks, Chairperson, and thanks, Mr. Shilenge, and as well as the eh ex-executive mayor eh and the team. I, I just would like to get clarity here because you, you had indicated that you need to not doubt. But my concern is that there is in the years, we're in twenty sixteen eh as a new eh, eh local municipality. But my, you, you are not providing information that talks to your current performance. Eh, in other words, the demonstration of your ability eh both technical as well as um financial with the existing eh, eh, or the current setup, noting that the, even the, the president and at all levels. The issue of municipalities being like the Achilles heel of eh eh the, the government of the day eh being eh lamented eh in all quarters. So I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned and I think it would assist if you may provide this information. I think in some way eh even my colleague here eh, the fellow panelist, eh, madam, um, Mr. Bokula highlighted that. And what you put forth is the capex. There is actually nothing that is talking to the ongoing repairs and maintenance. Um, because generally as a government, there is this eh concern of lack of maintenance and repairs, where you find that infrastructure gets dilapidated eh eh there is no provision of service to the eh, eh public. So if you may just provide that information. Uh, I understand also the issue of the constitutional mandate that you have, but eh why not being the issue up to now? Eh, just would also like to know if your, if planning is of essence to you, how come they do not engage Eskom prior to lodgment? Noting that they're, they're already supplying even if it is that eh standalone customer. Eh, also, there could be lessons learned from them eh if you look at your, I just want to understand how come? And then also, the last portion on, on my side is, it's, you're talking of the allocation of funds from DORA, which is still the same as taping eh to the FISCAS. Eh, we've seen municipalities, big municipalities where the problems actually exceed the benefits. And, and why in your case you think that is not going to happen? I will stop the eh, Chairperson, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kise. Um, I believe eh Miss eh Tembeka Semane, who is the member of the electricity subcommittee, has also joined um some time ago in the present, during the presentation eh or during the start. Mr. Semane, can I confirm that you are um on the platform?
Yeah, good morning, Chair. Yes, you can confirm. Good morning to you and good morning to the members of the public and apologies for joining later. I'm, I'm here, I've been here for the longest time since.
Yes, I know. All right, thank you very much. Eh, eh, do you have a question, Madam Semane, at this point?
At this point, I'm fine, Chair, with the, with the presentation. I have no further uh comments or questions.
Thank you very much. All right. Eh, just one question for me, I'm covered by the questions that were asked by my colleagues. Eh, just um on, on, on one, on maybe on, on one issue, eh the issue of eh the infrastructure eh where the, the, the infrastructure that is owned by Eskom which is running um closer to the areas that you have identified. Just to understand for purposes of motivating for your application, just in terms of eh, eh how the municipality will demonstrate its ability to supply um electricity um sort of in a, in a, in a, in a, in a cost-effective manner and also just eh from an operational point of view, where you would um be able to demonstrate to the regulator that um the municipality eh will have the capabilities, the resources so that even if there are problems, trips or anything that happens, eh the municipality will be able to attend to those things eh in the quickest time possible eh to do those things. I'm just using that just to simplify eh the point eh that you want you to clarify in terms of the ability to supply and eh demonstrating your capabilities and also just eh from an operational point of view in terms of cost considerations. Um, the question has already been touched on in terms of the tariffs, but we do want to understand, you know, the impact eh, eh on the customers or consumers in those areas, at least from your side. Um, and then also if you can touch on your engagements eh with Eskom eh since they have the infrastructure that is closer to the areas that you have identified, not that um eh you need approval for them for purpose of this license and, and also as a, as a competitor and a new entrant in the market, we're not necessarily saying that you must get approval from them, but just to understand eh in terms of cooperation um and also infrastructure that could be running, you know, closer to each other. Whether you have had any engagements, what were those engagements about and what was the outcome of the engagements? Thank you very much. Over to you, Mr. Shilenge.
Can I request eh just three minutes to consolidate our responses? If you allow us?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll give you three minutes eh, members. Um, if you can kindly um indulge the applicant here for three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mabunda, may you please check um if Mr. Shilenge is eh, they now available?
I'm on your chest.
Eh, Chairperson?
Eh, yes, Mr. Shilenge, you may go ahead, please, with your responses.
Yeah, yeah, eh, we, we are back, Chairperson, and thanks so much for affording us that opportunity to just eh brainstorm amongst eh ourselves. to just brainstorm amongst ourselves. And we are back with the responses. There was a question on the issue of a business plan that we need to showcase about. Let me indicate that we will make that submission to you of the business plan. Now, with regard to our communication with Escom, we've been communicating with Escom through different emails. And although I may not necessarily go to date, but there was a communication on the third of October wherein we were talking to them with regard to our application for bank. And we had a meeting with Escom in October in our offices, wherein we requested their advices in terms of how best can we approach this and also to discuss issues of the existing network, different discussions around that. And then when we went, we did our public notice, Escom sent the objection, of which we responded to that objection. And on top of that objection, we had a meeting with Escom around that objection on the eighteenth of March. And the fact that we got quotations from Escom, it was an indication that we're interacting with them. They gave us quotations, we do the payment. That was the communication that was happening between us. We have a proposed structure which outline how we want to run or operate these licenses. But before I get to that, let me indicate that currently our electrical section is existing, wherein we've got a manager in that section with electricians that assist us with the maintenance of the current infrastructure, like our high mast lights that we have in the villages, our streetlights. We have got our solar streetlights that we have also put up there. And we are able to maintain those infrastructure on our own with the little resources that we have. And part of us operating these licenses, I've indicated, Chairperson, that because we are going to appoint a couple of employees at a goal, we are going to appoint a service provider that is going to assist with the operation and at the same time transfer the skills to our employees that we are going to appoint there. And of course, we are not just going to appoint just home bodies. It will be appointment of home bodies with relevant qualifications, home bodies with relevant experience to make sure that once they arrive, we don't look like we're starting from scratch, but a continuation from where they will be coming from different institution with their relevant experiences. And let me also indicate, Chairperson, that as a municipality, we have done a couple of electrification projects, of course, through the INEP grant. And I cannot remember a single day wherein our municipality failed to complete each of the project. We have completed all of them and we are proud of that. And that will be an indication that we indeed have the capacity to can operate this license. Of course, it is going to be coupled by the appointment of the service provider to make sure that we have got skills transferred. The issue of, I think I've responded to the issue of the engagement with Escom, but there was a question on the issue of the standalone to say why didn't we engage with Escom on the standalone customer at Mabambi? Of course, when that installation was done, of course, we did not know as a municipality, because it's not even part of our IDP. But that does not take away the fact that we have to consult with the existing customer once this license kicks on, because that will be the first thing that we need to do to say once we have the license, we have to engage with that standalone customer, indicate to him or her what is happening now. The issue of Escom, a network that is existing along the areas that we've identified. I've indicated in my presentation, Chair, the issue of clear delineation in terms of who is who here. I've indicated in my presentation the clear separation of the two areas. I think in Malamlele D extension three, I've indicated the road that separate the old Malamlele D where Escom is existing and the new D extension three where the municipality want to go and exist. I've also indicated at my shows the river that separate the Escom network from.
Yes, yes, we've seen that. Mr. Shilenge, we have seen it. I'm afraid that the time is now ten to eleven since we've started.
Okay.
So the time is, yes. So we take note of the fact that you are going to submit to the energy regulator in the next seven days. That has been our practice. If there is something that has been asked during the public hearing, information that is appearing on the determination or decision of the application that is under consideration, that we will then request that the information be submitted in the next seven days. And that is the business plans that clearly demonstrate the preparations for this license and how you're going to implement it included in that.
Okay.
Will be the maintenance regime that you have in mind and the resources that you will have. The third thing that you will also demonstrate is the tariffs. Just in terms of benchmarking with the Escom tariffs, if you can give us information in relation to that so that we can see also what the impact is going to be on the customers, particularly with the areas that are adjacent to each other. So those things relate also to cost considerations. Those are the things that we will expect from you in the next seven days. We would like to thank you for your time and for also showing some commitment and seriousness in terms of your application by making yourself available and also bringing along the executive mayor to also be part of today's presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we are now going to call upon the next presenter. And the next presenter is from the Department of Electricity and Energy. We've got the name of Mr. Bongwe. I'm hoping that I'm pronouncing the surname clearly or sorry correctly, Mr. Bongwe or Bongwe?
Bongwe. Thank you, Chair.
Bongwe, okay, all right. May you please activate your camera?
Done.
Okay, maybe it's still coming up? All right. Okay, your camera is still not yet. Not yet.
Okay, let me switch off and on again. Is it fine now, Chair?
Maybe it's still coming up. I'll let you know.
Chair, maybe if we can ask other members if they can see me?
All right, let me ask. Mr., sorry, Madam Semane, are you able to see Mr. Bongwe?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Bongwe. I can see you.
Oh, okay, then that's fine then. Mr. Bokula, can you see him as well?
No, Chair, I can't, but I'm happy to continue.
Yes, all right. Our member has confirmed that she's able to see you. Ms. Semane, if you can kindly then confirm when Mr. Bongwe is raising his right hand. Mr. Bongwe, may you please raise your right hand?
Yes, he has raised his hand. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. May you solemnly declare that the information you are going to provide to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, Chair.
All right. Please state your full names and your designation at the Department of Electricity and Energy.
My name is Korambi Bongwe. I'm a Chief Director of Integrated National Electrification Program, which is INEP, under the leadership of our ministry, Minister Ramaphosa, Minister of the Department of Electricity and Energy.
All right. May you please then proceed with your presentation? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Can I switch it off now, Honorable Member?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Chair, we have circulated our presentation to the secretariat of the forum. The latest presentation was sent last evening, so can it be projected?
Mr. Mabunda, may you please assist?
Maybe while he's doing that, let me greet our executive member, our chairperson, Mr. Begula, and NERSA board, a different head of the departments, CEOs of different companies. I've seen many. My former bosses were part of this forum, Escom colleagues. And then I'm free to announce that, Chairperson, ourselves as INEP and the Department of Electricity and Energy and Escom and former DPE employees, we are now under one ministry, Ministry of Electricity and Energy. My greetings to all of you, especially you program director and our chairperson. So I, yes, we have realized that we need to announce that before we engage on the presentation. So we are here to support our local municipality, which is Collins Chavanne. We had different engagement with Collins Chavanne. And we've seen that it is very much important for them to acquire the lessons to distribute like other unlicensed municipalities or local municipalities in our entire country that we love. Next slide, a secretariat. I will start with the background. As a department, we've been mandated to ensure that we secure the provision of energy for the development of our economy by the name of social economic development. And ourselves as a unit of INEP, we are responsible to make sure that come 2013, everyone in our country have access to electricity. Next slide, a secretariat. As INEP, we are responsible for making sure that we plan together with our municipality and Escom. We also run project management. We fund different bank infrastructure. For example, it can be substation, it can be MV lines, medium voltage lines. And also we make sure that along the process, we connect our people, especially our indigenous community out there who don't have access to electricity. We are doing that by using two different technology. It can be a normal grid technology, it can be an off-grid technology. But we are running those two program in parallel to make sure that come 2013, as I've mentioned, everyone have access to electricity. Secondly, we use or utilize our Escom as an entity and local authorities as local municipalities and our non-grid service provider to make sure that they become our implementing agencies. As we are an overseer of the program or the smooth running of the program to make sure that by the next millennium of 2013, we have access to electricity hundred percent. We are proud of Collins Chavanne Local Municipalities. Yes, they are a rural-based local municipality. But in terms of performance, since they started partaking in the program of INEP, they didn't let us down. Their performance was excellent in the entire country as compared to other local authorities. Next slide, Chair. We have got guidelines policies that are guiding us to make sure that this program of INEP, it runs smooth effectively and also making sure that we don't return any funds to our Fiskers, which is national treasury in this regard. Policy number one is the key one, which is a suit of supply that covers all the categories in fundamental and it is a fundamental policy to make sure that whoever get access to electricity must comply to this suit of supply. We also fund bank. I think our MM mentioned an importance of construction of the bank. Since we are going to have a new development within the jurisdiction of Collins Chavanne, we fund the bank and they will continue to do that as a Department of Electricity and Energy. So wherever, as point number three, Chairperson, wherever we are experiencing an informal settlement, we make sure that a local authority, they commit themselves that, yes, continue to fund us to electrify this informal settlement. But there must be an agreement between the department and the local authority that if they're gonna move those community to a new area, we are not gonna fund the program. It's gonna be a budget of the municipality itself to run with that cost. We also fund farm dwellers' houses. We also exercise where we cannot reach using grid electrification. We opt for off-grid solution. We also fund a mixed development. I think MM mentioned that. A mixed development where we cover those low-cost housing around the new development in any area where the local municipality they are operating. Next slide. Our funding model. I think I've mentioned national treasury. National treasury, they are the main. National treasury, they are the main uh fund uh for any department, department like COGTA, human settlement, including the Department of Electricity and Energy through Dora Grant. So the funds flow to the to the department and then we split the funds into two. Schedule five B and schedule six B. Five B, it deals with the municipality program and six B, it deals with Eskom program. So under municipality program, we took a stand, I think by that time we were still a Department of Minerals and Energy. That was long time back, I think it was fifteen years back, where we allow the program to fund even unlicensed municipalities. I would I will mention why we have done that and also licensed municipalities. The reason why we continue to fund unlicensed municipalities, Eskom, uh because of the capacity within. Uh for the past ten years, they've been uh applying for rollover of mega billions. So then we said to accelerate the program so that we mustn't we mustn't be found wanting come twenty thirty. Let's also make sure that unlicensed municipalities that have got capacity to roll out the program, let's fund them because the funds are coming from the same basket, which is INET grant. So that is why we exercise and we are still exercising that. Under Eskom program, yes, we are, we plan together with Eskom as a department and then we we move and then Eskom, they implement according to any local authority I D P. They don't implement as they wish. They wait for the I D P, uh uh local authority, they ask for the I D I D P approved by the council and then they run with the program. And the non-grid, we run it within the department, the money flows from treasury to the department. We appoint the service provider and then we dispatch them to local authority where there is a need of the off-grid solution. Next page. Uh we've got an obligation to fund the following: informal settlement, farm dwellers, infills, pre-engineering, we allow uh our local municipality to plan uh before they apply for a for a for a fund to implement uh a normal program of INET. I've indicated earlier on that we also fund the bank infrastructure, the mixed developer project. And also we allow if the mu- mu- local municipality, they've got anything within the fiscus, they can write to the department that because there's a need out there, we have got few millions that we can ut- utilize uh to accelerate the program. We allow them to do that and then we come back and course reimburse them. Next slide. This is our allocation criterion. Uh the first bullet, it talks to where there's a high backlog, especially at our rural uh areas. And then where we didn't re- uh receive any application, of course, we are not gonna allocate. But we also look at the past performance of the local authority so that it also influence them to get more funding. We are very rural bias, especially on the fifty-seven uh uh priority districts, including Bembay. Because also calling, of course, Colindjavane, they are under Bembay district. So we are very biased on that. So we are also encouraging all our local authority, the local municipality to make sure that they bring business plan upfront uh so that we come and assess if there's any need to fund those bank uh uh bank infrastructure. And also, I we are so delighted today because we've been joined by our uh executive mayor. It shows an element of commitment, hands-on, from our political leader. We are, we are really delighted by seeing that happening. And then where treasurer, they recoup funds by mistake, we make sure that we plant those funds that have been recouped by by national treasury to continue with the program. We also fund the multi-year project uh and also the reimbursement, I've mentioned it. The last, okay, the second last slide, uh Chairperson. As a department, uh we support all the applications by doing number one, monitoring the performance of the municipality and Eskom when they are implementing INET. And we also uh fund unlicensed municipalities uh that um if they don't have a license, there is a service level, le- service level agreement, S L A, which need to be entered between unlicensed municipality and Eskom. So that when they complete with the program, they hand over the those those assets back to Eskom for operation and maintenance. But we are still in uh encouraging our uh unlicensed municipalities that have got capacity within to apply for a license uh to NERSA. Number three, uh we support all the applications uh uh of the of our Eskom and municipalities that qualify for funding uh of INET. And then we also uh uh on bullet number four, Chairperson, if this application will be approved or considered, we will continue to make sure that the backlog that Colindjavane has in the next two years, three years, I think they are sitting at about four thousand uh households without uh without electricity. So we are saying we are committed as a department to make sure that the backlog that they have in the next two to three years, by before twenty thirty, we clean up that backlog, whether that be dealing or continue uh to fund the new development, the master roaming of the infills, we will continue to do that. On the three areas that they applied for, yes, we received the application and the applic- their application are under consideration, even though the areas are under greenfield because we influence all the local municipality too. Make sure that they secure the all the greenfields and apply direct to NERSA. They will get a support from our ministry and from INET. Going forward, uh uh Chairperson, um as on my last slide, Chair. The department will remain supporting all the local municipalities, including Colindjavane, where they applied for license on the green field. Last one, Chairperson, we will always, I've I think I've indicated that we always encourage wherever we go around the country, encourage the unla- uh unlicensed uh authority to follow the same suit like what Colindjavane uh did. That is why we are engaged today like this. The department, it is in support with the license or uh approving or NERSA to approve the license or their application for this license. And I don't wanna mention for the benefit of their revenue collection, I think the M M indicated that let's empower our local authority for LED purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Mister Wongwe, uh for the presentation. Um I'm going to now request the members to pose questions of clarity um from uh uh to the presentation uh delivered by Mister Wongwe. Uh any questions, members, by show of hands? Questions from the members? Alright, maybe, okay, thank you very much. Uh Mister, uh Madam Semani, no questions also from your side?
Yes, Madam Masetti, no question from my side as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just ask one question of clarity. Um uh as you know that we received um an uh an objection from Eskom uh with regards to the two applications. I just want to um uh uh hear what your views are on the on the on the reasons for that objection. That's the first thing. The second one that I would like to clarify is whether Eskom had um applied for the the funding from the department for purposes of um uh uh electrifying these three areas, taking advantage of the fact that these are greenfields and therefore um show an intention of um uh you know, um supplying these areas with electricity. Have you received any application from Eskom uh for the three areas that are under consideration? Those are the two questions. Thank you.
So let me start with the last one, Chair, but I I I also have to observe us, uh Mister Grill Ambani. Uh they are listening on the other side and uh Director Technical Planning, uh Bongani Slavati, they are part of of this session. Uh let me start with the last one. Uh we didn't receive any application, uh considering the three areas, uh Mavambe, uh Malamlele and Majuz, we didn't receive that. So if uh they want to apply for that, it gonna be a new application. And then which we are not gonna entertain because the area, it doesn't belong to them still. So on the obj- objection, uh we didn't receive any or we di- we were not copied or we were not on the loop of the objection, but I think, uh Chair, let's allow them to present and then we will engage on their objection after their presentation. Chair?
Alright. No, thanks very much. I think the que- the the responses um are 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 sufficient for purposes of uh uh the the hearing today. So um I would like to thank you then for the responses um and also thank you for your time and the clarification that you have provided. Thank you very much. Mister Mo- Wongwe?
Yeah, no, no, thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, and then thank you for inviting us uh us and then uh uh in future, we will always make ourselves available uh to make sure that uh our community out there are not compromised because of small, smaller N Y N dispute uh regarding who's supposed to have a license, yeah, who's supposed not to have a license. Let's uh sit like this and make sure that everything it runs smooth and then assisting our community out there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you uh to the department. We now going to allow Eskom to um give us a a presentation on the application and I've got the name of Nari Ngwepi. Nari?
Yes, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thanks.
Uh may you please activate your camera?
You try to do that.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Um.
Is it visible on the side?
Yes, it is visible. Thank you. Um may you please um raise your right hand? Uh do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to provide to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, Chair.
Right, please um state your name and your designation at Eskom.
My name is Nari Godfrey Ngwepi. I'm the Network Planning Manager for Limpopo Province in the Limlangar Fluster of Distribution.
Alright, thank you very much. You may start with your presentation.
Um good, good afternoon, Chair. Maybe to mention that I'm also with my senior manager for asset creation for the Limlangar Fluster in Distribution, uh Mister Pravin Ori. And also with me is the senior engineer responsible for the area, Mister Plati Lezwar.
Are they going to um make the presentation with you or are you the only person that is going to uh do the presentation?
I'm the only person that is going to do the presentation, Chair.
Okay, you may proceed then. Thank you.
Okay, we have circulated or sent the presentation through to the secretariat. I'm sure if I can be assisted, Chair. But whilst doing that, allow me also to greet your panel. I may not know who is who except my colleagues in the Colindjavane Municipality and others in NERSA, but allow me to observe all the protocols, Chair.
Thank you very much.
I I think we can move to the next slide. Uh uh thanks um very much, Chair, for the opportunity as well. Um the purpose of this uh presentation, Chair, uh is to present the Eskom's position regarding this uh application from Colindjavane Municipality and really the three focus uh areas with respect to the technical and the operational and the regulatory concerns that we are having around these applications for the areas that have been mentioned. And your next slide is just to to give the the background. Um I think the reason why we are here is an obvious case that the municipality has applied for for the license and the areas mentioned or the areas applied for is Mavambe, Malamlele D extension and Majuzi with a total of three thousand seven hundred ninety-sixteen. And the number may uh not necessarily be accurate, but I think that's what we got from the 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 application, uh Chairperson. And in the application, it was stated that um uh the the Department of uh E- Electricity and Energy has approved the the INET funding under the schedule uh B. Now, but to mention that Chair, that there is a parallel or there was a parallel process to that application that the municipality has applied for the bank supply points um for those respective areas. And we processed those applications as per our standard process, uh not necessarily under the licensing review, but we process them like any other application, any other customer who will apply for a bank supply. We process them and to mention that they uh municipality have paid for the application fee. But we have since um um holded the the application after noticing that NERSA has published a notice for for the public comments to to the license application. So we haven't issued the budget code uh to those applications or what the municipality has applied for is the the application fee. And um after that public um um that the notice published by by NERSA, yes, we did submit our our objection uh to to the application. And after that, we also had the the meeting with the municipality in the presence of of NERSA and I think that's where NERSA has indicated that there will be a public hearing for for Eskom to state their position on record and that is the reason why uh we we are here, Chair. Uh can move to the next uh slide. And our position as uh uh Eskom Chair is to to object this application um in that the municipality is applying for for a distribution license geographically in areas currently and and historically supplied by by Eskom, so the surrounding areas um supplied by by Eskom. I think in the next few slides, we'll see where our networks are. And we remain the licensed distributor in the in the surrounding areas that I I mentioned. And we we have already established a comprehensive uh distribution network to supply those uh areas around around there. And as per NERSA rules on the licensable areas of of supply, it discourages the the two supplier authorities to supply within the same area of of supply and and therefore, Chair, granting this license to the municipality. And and therefore, Chair, granting this license with the municipality will will be going against that. Uh rules. The municipality seeks to establish distribution uh license. Operations uh in 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 the areas where the surrounding areas as I've mentioned. That we are already uh supplying and we believe that that license will will result in a fragmented. Areas of uh supply. And 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 the islanding that will be created uh within that integrated grid. Um will will create uh operational inefficiencies and and and. There will be challenges, Chair, to to the reliability of of the grid and I think the 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 maintenance. For that particular network, particularly the the breakdown maintenance of the fault uh locations, Chair. Can move to the next slide. In terms of our technical uh assessment with the information that we have received. Uh for Mavambe Extension, that is the area. Um applied for and there are two customers uh already supplied by by Eskom. Um from the same network, but from different points of the of the same uh. Line, Malamulele Jimmy Jones, that that twenty K V line highlighted with the the blue. Line comes from uh Malamulele Power Station, I mean rather, Malamulele Substation, Chair. I think the intention to acquire the bulk uh supply, as as I've mentioned, that we have received, of course, the bulk supply. Uh applications and we were in the process of processing them is uh to to supply these areas. But at at that time, it it was just a bulk supply for us, so we didn't know what the intention was. Can can move to the next slide. Uh this one is the Malamulele D D Extinction and of course is a green uh filled with no. No activities or no customers uh within that area, except that. Um if you can follow the the green line. Uh is our um Eskom network. And I think that road, there is the uh delineating um line. So the 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 line, not necessarily, not necessarily um. Yeah, within the the boundary, but it's just crossing the delineating line, Chair. We can, we can move to the next slide. Think then that that will be the. The Majusi line or rather the Majusi area. Um there, Chair, yes, it is a green field. There are no activities yet within. Within that area, uh except that across there is uh. Uh network, Eskom network, as as indicated by by the orange lines, that that is where we are supplying. The areas uh adjacent or outside of that area uh that is being applied for. The next slide talks about the operational implications. As I've mentioned, that the fragmented networks um. Will cause disjointed operational areas that will compromise the integrity of of the grid. And the risk of uh overlapping responsibilities and misalignment, whi- which will cause. Uh the operational conflicts in the future. And the split jurisdiction, which will obviously lead to some miscommunications uh within the operations. And uh may also lead to to safety incidents, uh, Chair. And and the multiple service providers, as 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 it is contested now. Uh in a single geographic area, they also cause confusion to 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 the customers. So we believe that granting the municipality uh the license uh in 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 this region that is already serviced by. Uh by Eskom in the in the surroundings. Uh will will result in unnecessary duplication of infrastructure, as as I've mentioned that. Al- already in the adjacent areas already have uh existing infra- infrastructure. Uh to the next slide. In the next slide, just about the regulatory uh concerns that we we have. That to supply the area edge as defined in in the rules. Um refers to the increase of an area of supply through additional or new uh stem. In an existing resort, uh in the proclaimed area of supply. Or addition of new properties in the in the area with the same uh with a name that are requiring electricity connections. So the additional um uh properties should should be within the same resort area. Uh or the proclaimed area with the common name. Uh Eskom uh in this regard, Chair, is of the view that the the areas in question falls under this definition. And and should this application be granted in its current form as it is, then this will violate this section of the rules. And go against the position uh approved in the in the rules. And as for the criteria for inclusion in an area of supply, I think we we here refer to. Uh section G in particular, that the the rules clearly state that the the criteria of this inclusion. In an area of supply and most of these uh clauses. Of this set criteria will be violated if this application is is granted in its current form. And the regulatory uh compliance, um the electricity distribution is is highly. So these definitions are as they are in the rules, Chair. It's a highly regulated industry that requires strict adherence. To national safety standards, uh engineering practices and environmental regulations. And Eskom, uh we have uh well-established safety protocols. Uh uh experienced uh uh personnel and a proven track record of compliance with all relevant uh standards. And and there is a legitimate concern um from from Eskom Chair that the municipality may not necessarily have this level of expertise. Uh currently and um the resources to ensure this compliance. Which which would pose significant uh safety risks, particularly to to the public. In conclusion, Chair, the municipality license, as as I've mentioned, that would really fragment. Um the the integrated distribution area, yeah, as it is now. And the creation of of this uh island will will undermine the the grid resilience. And um compromise uh safety. Within within the areas and our understanding um of the regulatory process. Is that the municipality must first obtain the distribution license by meeting all. Of the lesser license application requirements, which I think is what they are doing now. But it appears that the municipality is being licensed by by virtue of applying for a bulk supply. This is what I was trying to explain earlier, that I think it is two different processes. Of course, they applied for the bulk supply, but that was just for like any other customer who would apply. For a bulk supply and we will process it as such as as per our standards. And and by ob- obtaining or applying for INAP funding. Uh for the pockets of uh these supply areas, I mean, may not necessarily. Uh giving the the license, Chair. So if if this uh the the precedence or the principle that will be set for the future license applications. I I I don't I don't believe uh it should be, Chair. And our understanding is 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 also that the rules of licensable areas discourage. This uh creation of islands within yeah the the distribution areas. And uh as Eskom uh. If this really uh meant to create this uh pocket within the municipality areas of supply. So is is this aligned to the year A A that requires the orderly development of of the infrastructure? And 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 I think our engagement with the municipality, which I think I will talk about it later. Uh we should uh further clarify that in terms of the existing infra- infrastructures. So as Eskom is 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 cognizant that the the service delivery should not be delayed because of these administrative. Uh issues, because we believe we are able to carry out the electrification work as required by the the INAP funding. I think we have been uh doing that, not not only with this municipality, but with other municipalities as well. Um, yeah, Chair. And it's for the above reasons that we object to this application by the municipality. For 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 the listed areas uh above. So as as I conclude, Chair, uh we therefore respectively request NERSA to decline this license. Uh application. And we are committed, of course, to to working collaboratively with. Uh within the regulatory frameworks, uh with the municipalities, of course, for the improved service delivery. And we are of the view that further engagements between the municipality and us. Uh has a potential of bearing better results, uh that will ensure the customers. Uh do not suffer, that will ensure the customers have access to to electricity. And have reliable uh electricity. As much as we do acknowledge that, yes, there may be a a backlog, like any other municipalities. We have a plan to deal with that backlog for the next coming years up until twenty thirty, Chair. And and in 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 addition to to that point about uh those engagements that. Uh we hoping to have with the municipalities in the future. Will ensure alignment to to the NERSA rules, which which were crafted, we believe, based on this uh. On the real-life experience of how areas of supply issues uh must be regulated. And the INAP funding projects, uh we believe are also subjected to these rules. And as a result, uh it is encouraged that all the stakeholders observe them and implement them as required. To avoid the potential risks that may be created, particularly uh the safety risk. Uh so for the public in particular, Chair. And thank you very much, Chair, for for the opportunity. To allow us to state the Eskom case. As I've said, we believe that further engagement. Uh with the municipality and other stakeholders, uh will will bear. Uh the results and and not necessarily affect the the customers out there for the service delivery, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much uh for your presentation, uh Mister Ngwepi. Let me check if the members of the regulator have any questions of clarity by show of hands, members. If members may raise their hands uh for questions of clarity, let me start with Mister Pugula.
Thank you, Chairperson. Thank you, Mister Ngwepi. Mister Ngwepi, you may just confirm that. Your distribution license includes the areas of Mabam- Mabambe, Maluleke and Majus. As in that they are specified like that, not as in that in Maluleke. Do you have two customers that you have you have supplied? It I I I just want something explicit about that it specifies that those are your areas of supply. The second question I I have for you is is that if I look at the other areas that you have also. Said they are greenfield areas, uh they would be no different if if we were talking. Like an estate in the Perry Ebon areas. And in an estate, they don't require necessarily your services. They can also build their own infrastructure. And why, why wouldn't you uh accept this kind of um. Uh arrangement with with Colines Chabane Municipality that they will be buying the bulk supply from you. And what they do inside there is what is going to be dictated by by them and and by buying the bulk supply. I I don't foresee the technical. Uh challenges or reliability challenges. It's just a supply and you will uh treat it accordingly. And they would have their own system protection and other things within. That would ensure that it meets the NRS requirements and other standards. So so. I don't see how it will affect the liability, especially in the greenfield areas. And and then the the last part, I I think it's also not uh. Accurate, but but I, with the exception of maybe some billing infrastructure, it probably is not accurate to say that. In Majusi, for instance, and others that are greenfield, that there would be duplication of infrastructure. There is nothing that Eskom has put in there. So whatever would be put in there would be new infrastructure, but. If we are then talking about the billing and other infrastructure that you will just continue to use and and all of that. Then then I'm 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 fine that I understand what you mean by duplication of infrastructure. But thank you very much, Mister Ngwepi. Those are my questions. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Mister Pugula. It seems uh there are no um uh other questions from the other members. But if I may just also um uh check with you, Mister Ngwepi, in relation to your objection. As you understand, the application before us is for separate licenses. So the the license for operation of the distribution facility. And I think Mister Pugula has already touched on the issue of whether or not that is infrastructure. Um in the areas uh that are proposed. Um and then the second one is on the trading. Now, your objection um does not exclude trading. May I ask why you are also objecting uh to the trading license? I did not get the reasons why you are also um uh objecting to the the trading license. The other uh uh question that I just want to check to check with you is the. Um is the fact that you say you already have infrastructure, um uh you know, that can easily supply those areas. The question is why you couldn't take um um you know, the opportunity, the market opportunity that was there. And when somebody else um uh takes that opportunity, you are saying that that person, that that um um person. Should not be allowed uh to operate. And yet you also touched on the issue of um uh not depriving. Uh the residents in those areas with um uh the service delivery, which will include electricity, I assume. And so how do you justify these things? Does it mean that areas simply because there's some infrastructure that is close by? Therefore, those areas must be reserved for the party that is already there and there should not be. Um any new entrance that the regulator must allow to come into the 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 market. And take advantage of the opportunities that are there and be able to make their case before the regulator. Uh to service the areas that are not currently serviced. How do we deal with that? Thank you. You may respond, Mister.
Is it now?
Ngwepi, yes.
Is my opportunity now, Chair?
Yes, we are done with the questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh tha- thanks very much for for the questions. Uh ye- um uh ye- yes, Chair, I I can confirm with the information that. We we received um. That those that are true um customers that we are supplying within. Um. Within that area of uh Mavambe, Chair, as uh was was indicated. Uh within with with that with that map. Um. The other question, um why wouldn't we accept. The municipality for for greenfields, um uh how will it affect the the reliability, Chair? And um the ends I've indicated that. Uh our um further engagement. Ah our eh the further engagements with the municipality at this stage, because I I don't believe that we we. They have exhausted eh all eh technically that eh we we should have had. But eh that we we still believe that eh the reliability of our network. And for now, we we're talking of eh the network upstream that will be eh supplying those eh areas, Chair. So I believe that eh if not done eh properly, if in case eh eh. The regulator is to eh to to grant this eh eh license. Eh we might be eh affected eh upstream, Chair, if it is not eh done properly. And eh I think the other three eh questions, Chair, if you were to allow me. Eh because um not necessarily sitting and I did not ask for for caucus with with my team. But in the interest of time, eh if eh I can eh provide you with a return eh response for that. If it is okay with with the Chair.
Yes, that is in order. You may eh provide the returned responses to the other questions in writing. So you can provide it in the next seven days, the returned responses.
Yes, I've got the questions eh written down, Chair.
Yes, no problem. Thank you very much eh, Mr Ngwephe, for for your time. We look forward to the eh responses in the next seven days. Thank you. Okay, eh thank you very much. Members, we are now going to eh eh call the the municipality eh. Eh Mr eh Shilenge. Now you are not going over your 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 presentation again, but it is just a reply. Eh on the issues that you may have picked up and you felt that they probably need some clarification. Eh just to reply on the issues mentioned by Eskom or by the department that you believe you need to just eh respond to. We're just giving you eh three to five minutes for that, Mr Shileng.
Eh, Chairperson? Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Chair. I think I've listened to Eskom objection. And to my big shock, Chair, eh is that eh. Most of the things they are putting up there in the presentation, they don't appear in their first objection. So I'm not sure whether they've remanufactured their latest objection on the slide. But nonetheless, it's not something that we can worry about. Because if I'm I'm listening to Eskom and 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 Chair, in particular, their last slide. Eh let me remind Eskom here, of course represented by Mr Nari, that eh. As as Colles Chabane, we acknowledge, Chair, that eh Eskom has been there since nineteen twenty-three. And eh we we I I mean, it's common knowledge, Chair, that wherever you go in South Africa. If Eskom was established in nineteen twenty-three to do electricity reticulation generation in South Africa. The likelihood is that you will find their line everywhere in South Africa. But, Chair, that does not take away our responsibility in terms of the constitution of the Republic nineteen ninety-six. That electricity is our constitutional mandate. And I think that 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 is one area that Eskom need to start to to respect. And of course, I agree with you, I I I I agree with with Eskom. When they raise issues of expertise and they what 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 what, how do you have expertise before you get a license? Le- let let them withdraw their objection, we get the license, we will show them that we do have expertise. If we could do INEP, if we could do our own maintenance, which is electricity. The expertise is there and more expertise is going to to be there, Chair. But let me let 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 me deal with this this one. The the issue of their existing lines, if they are there. Because 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 the other thing is, when one has taken an oath, you know? And and you come here and eh and 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 say to the public that eh you 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 are objecting to Colles Chabane. Because there are two standalone eh lines in an area which they know for sure that is a greenfield. I'm I'm a bit worried about that part. But the issue of their existing lines. Why is Eskom operating side by side in 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 big cities? Like like your city of Jobek, like your city of Twanning, they are operating side by side. You find Eskom line, you find the the municipality line. Why will that not happen in Colles Chabane? It it should happen, because the fact that we are rural does not take away that we've got capacity. I think, Chairperson, let's 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 assist by lecturing our Eskom to understand that being rural doesn't mean that you don't know anything. We are rural, but we have got expertise. I've indicated in my presentation that eh. We have got a manager electrical who is coming from local, so it should not be seen as if being rural municipality. Will 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 mean that we we can't operate electricity. We have got Makado eh municipality next to us. It's it's operating eh 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 electricity. We have got Pulukwani in the same province. So if we are given this opportunity, we will definitely eh operate. And 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 I I think I've addressed the issue of 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 side by side. And we are saying, Chairperson. Bulk, we will buy from Eskom. So if they are thinking of generating revenue. There will still revenue, because we're not going to buy electricity from anywhere. We will buy electricity directly from them. And I've indicated eh when we met with them during, when we were discussing the objection, Chair. I said to Mr Nare, Mr Nare, I am shocked that you are coming here and meet us to discuss an objection. While we expect you, as the the old crook in this field, to assist us. How best can we approach this application so that at the end of the day, we get this license? Can't he, in that meeting, they were coming to sniff so that they they identify the areas. Then when they go back, they they modify and justify more their objection. I think I think we're not finding that well, Chair. We 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 expect Eskom to support us in this initiative. Because we need this license as of yesterday. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much eh, Mr Shilenge, for your reply and for touching on the points that eh you felt they just need eh some clarification. Members, eh the this is the last presenter for today's hearing. And I would like to thank all the presenters, thanks eh to thank the observers eh who are interested in this matter. And also thank the members of the energy regulator for being here and assisting in clarifying issues. Eh for purposes of ensuring that the regulator will come to the right decision. Once we get all the information and we thoroughly apply ourselves eh to the information that is before us. Eh I would like to now eh bring this hearing to a close. And thanks eh to the eh to the to all of the presenters eh that eh appeared today. Thank you, members of the regulator. We may go to the eh pre-hearing link eh just eh for a few minutes. Eh the hearing is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a good weekend.
Thanks, Chairperson.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairperson. Thanks, colleagues.
Bye.
Thanks.